Marchtown, City Council Agenda, City Council Chambers, Town West State Street, August 12, 2019, 5:30. We'll open the meeting and call to order. Notice to public, the mayor and city council, welcome comment from the public. On any discussion items of the agenda items, you are required to step up to the microphone, state your name and address. For the record, limit your time used to three minutes or less so others can give a comment. Speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council and not to any counselor specifically. It is at the discretion of the mayor, that's me, and the council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to order, I welcome people to stand up and pledge of allegiance to those who can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Isom.
Here.
Lamer.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Weren.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Gowdy.
Here.
Full house, great. Next thing is the mayor, council, and minister to comments. Any from up here? Seeing none, I intend to start feeding the people who have actually been pretty instrumental in our city. And tonight, I'd like to say that Mark and Fana Nord are to the people that should be feeded. Fana does the CBD, she's been the president of that. She has been the every other year person to feed the second story living spaces. Recently, she had the, she was the one that was in charge of the, let's celebrate downtown and have businesses have tents and events downtown. Her husband, Mark, is a musician and he has been donating his time and energy and musical experience for all sorts of events downtown. So, to the Nords, thank you. That's my comment. Anybody else?
I was gonna say, I just have a few things. One is that tomorrow is the Iowa Great Places Redesignation Celebration at four o'clock in 13th Street. And then another event that's coming up before our next council meeting is the open house for the ADA Transition Plan, which is the 22nd from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the library. And so it'll be an opportunity for people to come out and mention what their priorities are within that plan.
We have people for recognition of years of service. Anyone here to do that?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, well, I'll say Ann Ralston with 10 years, Vern Jefferson 15, Greg Pepper 15 years, and Joy LaVille 20 years. Thank you for your years of service.
Your Honor.
Yes.
When I did the Citizens Academy with the fire department many years ago now, Greg Pepper was my coach, or whatever they were called then. It was the first year we did it. It was pretty fun, so, thanks Greg.
I can't believe how many people have done that, really, truly. That's been great. Thank you Chief for leading that. Onto item number two. Civil Service.
I move for approval of the consent agenda, Your Honor.
Second. Thank you.
Was that a second from Lamer? Thank you.
We will take that as a second, thank you. Discussion, vote.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Thank you. Carried.
We do have one slight amendment to the consent agenda. Item number 13 is setting a public hearing for August 26, not actually approving the agreement.
Do I need to change my motion? Would that be better?
Yeah.
Okay, with that change then, I move for approval.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Thank you. Carried.
We do have one slight amendment to the consent agenda. Item number 13 is setting a public hearing for August 26, not actually approving the agreement.
Do I need to change my motion? Would that be better?
Yeah.
Okay, with that change then, I move for approval.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Resolution authorizing the purchase of property at 105 North Sixth Street.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion.
This is a tornado damaged property where the owner is not able to take care of it. It's one that we have had some frequent complaints on and so this is, Michelle was able to confirm with our FEMA representative that this would be eligible under their demolition program as well for 85% of eligible costs to be reimbursed.
Discussion or questions from up here or out there? Roll call.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
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 Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Thank you. Carried.
We do have one slight amendment to the consent agenda. Item number 13 is setting a public hearing for August 26, not actually approving the agreement.
Do I need to change my motion? Would that be better?
Yeah.
Okay, with that change then, I move for approval.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
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 Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Thank you. Carried.
We do have one slight amendment to the consent agenda. Item number 13 is setting a public hearing for August 26, not actually approving the agreement.
Do I need to change my motion? Would that be better?
Yeah.
Okay, with that change then, I move for approval.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
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 Lamer.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
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 Yes.
Isom.
The history of how we got here, Bolton and Mink did the Highway 14 study. And in that study, that's where they recommended the completion of a bypass roadway using Edgewood to connect with Marion Street. And so this was a work product that they had brought to us in that plan. And ultimately, we determined that they were the best ones to complete that since it was their initial vision. And so we've had some meetings with the, I've got the graphic up here to show you the general area that we're talking about, which you'll recognize does not get us to Marion Street, which is not a problem because the area or the land that abuts Marion is already zoned M2 and does not need to be part of the preliminary plat at this point. So this is all to basically enable us to apply for a RISE grant from the Iowa DOT. The competitive round is due on September 1st, and it's basically 50% funding for a project at that point. In order to get awarded a grant, we have to be moving into the process where we have a preliminary plat completed before award, as well as a rezoning that would be done before they would consider an award. So it's considered more of a speculative grant, but they need to show that the, we need to show that the city is actually taking some steps to make that happen. So one of the, this would basically be getting that process underway. The cost is $44,800, which as Greg Broussard knows, I freaked out at that number when he first sent me something because I didn't understand that that actually gets us to a 50% design on the roadway. So basically, half the engineering for the, and design for the roadway has been completed just to get to that point, which Michelle noted is what's required per our ordinances. So with that, and ultimately, if this is a project that we are going to move forward with, I would recommend the funding source of the capital project designated lost funds, of which there's about 2.1 million currently available. If we were to be successful with this grant, we would likely be notified in December. It would probably be at the December Iowa DOT Commission meeting where they would be making some recommendations. But I would hope that we'd have some idea of our success prior to that, to just give us a general idea. So I'm happy to take any questions.
I got one. Big picture, where is it going? Where will it end?
So this would actually, I don't know if I can kind of show it here. Big picture, the 50-year picture would be taking it all the way to 18th Avenue and then working with the DOT to construct a new bridge over the Iowa River to really make 18th Avenue sort of the truck route through town. That's a big 50-year vision. This initial phase, which was always projected as a short-term phase, would basically be running the road along the property line of property that we have sold to Alliant, which we would need to buy back, which Alliant has said we could do at the rate that we sold it to them at. So it would basically be aligning pretty much where JBS's driveway is currently on Marion Street where the trucks pull in. So it is something where we did some evaluation of how the substation that Alliant has installed impacts this project as kind of we, it was initially concepted and determined that ITC has some poles, which would be very, very, very expensive to move. And so keeping things as close to the, what would be the eastern property line of the substation property is going to be our best bet, rather than trying to align with 8th Avenue.
Thanks.
You're just going to plat the street, is what?
No. So I thank you for having me clear.
How big, how big a lots are you going to plat? Are you going to do all that?
Um, yes. So we actually have to plat lots on this as well, because the DOT will fund 50% of your project to the furthest platted lot. So we would need a lot essentially platted down in this area in order to be able to garner a likely full 50% towards that part of the roadway. So this is indeed something where we would not be 100%. I, this is probably a Greg question. Would we be 100% restricted to RISE eligible uses, or is it an agreement where we can negotiate how many lots could be used for RISE eligible purposes?
With the competitive grant process through RISE, if we get that, so it's 50/50 match from the city, so 50% from RISE, 50% from the city, and 51% of the properties have to meet the RISE criteria. So we'd have to have 51% of the ground out there would have to be for a industrial use. And then the other 49% of the land could be for some other type of use out in that area as well.
And one of the things that they did clarify with us through this type of grant process, there is no penalty if no development happens. So if no development happens, there is no penalty to the city, no repayment. But if we were to exceed 49% for a non-industrial use, then that's when there would be a penalty.
Comments? Public comment? Let's move on to this one.
Lamer?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Thank you. Carrie? Next item, please, Madam Clerk.
Resolution setting date for public hearing on a development agreement with Flint Hills Holdings, including economic development payments in an estimated amount not to exceed $400,000.
So moved.
Thank you.
I apologize for the blank there. I was out of the office and there was a question sent on Friday and couldn't fulfill it. One of the things that we'll find here in the near future, Flint Hills is sort of interchangeable with Landover at this point. Landover is a consultant working with Flint Hills on the development of the 50-unit complex to be here on State Street and the location of the Senior Citizens Center. And so at our last meeting, when we talked about the sort of the different incentives that are available downtown, we did talk about this one and how they would like to see 100% of the tax increment finance rebate over a 10-year period returned to them. When I did the calculations of what things would be using some estimated tax values and estimated rollbacks and different things as well, that's where I came up with an amount that was, I think, about $360,000, not providing any sort of assumptions that increased value over time or anything else. So in a not-to-exceed $400,000 amount over 10 years, this property will only get back what they pay in incremental taxes, so it's not taking anything else from the rest of the district. And if they never hit $400,000, they do not get $400,000. So if it's a 10-year agreement where the actual incremental taxes are only $20,000, that 10-year value of the agreement would be $200,000. So it's really, this is the least risky development agreement that we could do. And so what's before you tonight is a resolution to set the public hearing, with the public hearing to be held on August 26th.
So this is a rebate of their, a rebate of their entire taxes?
Incremental taxes only. So they still pay the-
Explain that.
So they still pay property taxes on what the base value is. So every entity still gets the base value of taxes, which, you know, there is a taxable value to our properties, even though they have been exempt for the duration that we've owned them. So every political entity that collects taxes will still get some amount of money, but then it's anything that's above sort of the incremental, above that base becomes increment, and that's where that's captured. And then that's rebated back to the developer.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I would be assuming that some more detail would be presented by Flint Hills, or some more of at least a skeleton proposal.
Yes. We, I don't think we've received a site plan from them yet at this point. They're still in the phase where they are putting together financial pieces and going after some different tax credits besides low-income housing tax credits. But I will make sure that I put that request to them, that they provide more information for the August 26th meeting.
I thought it was 52 units, and some are going to be market rate.
They had to knock it down to 50, and 10% or five will be market rate.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Up here. Out there. Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
We have a public hearing followed by a resolution adopting a tender resolution providing for the conveyance and transfer of title to Marshalltown Water Works' property at 707 South Fourth Street, and authorizing execution and delivery of quick claim deed.
Any motion?
Oh, we need to open the public hearing first.
Open the public hearing, sorry, thank you, at 6:01 PM. Any written comments to the clerk?
I have not received any written comments for this title.
Any public comments? Staff review.
This, we, we talked about it a little bit at our last meeting, where we had been approached by Water Works to convey this property to them. It's not developable for us, as there's a giant water main running underneath it, and they have a use for it to help them continue to serve bulk water customers as the bridge repairs are underway.
Any council comments? Public hearing is declared to be done at 6:02 PM.
I move for approval, Your Honor.
Second. Thanks, Sue. Roll call.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Thank you. Carrie? Next item, Madam Clerk.
We have a public hearing followed by a resolution adopting a tender resolution relating to conveyance of title to Dan Oswald for 108 North 7th Avenue and authorizing execution and delivery of quick claim deed.
Okay. The public hearing is open at 6:02. Has the clerk received any written comments?
I have not, Your Honor.
Any public comments? Staff review.
Yes, this was one where we actually had a neighboring property ask us if we were willing to sell this, which our process for doing so, when it's going to be less than market value, is to put out a request for sealed bids. And the winning bid came from Dan Oswald. And so this is our step now to complete that transaction with him, if it's of your choosing.
Thank you. Any council comments? Madam Clerk, declare the public hearing closed at 6:03 PM.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Carrie, thank you.
Onto item I, discussion number one, 12th Avenue Shared Use Path Project Update.
Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. Before the meeting, I passed out a memo that was prepared by Clapsettle &amp; Garber and Associates outlining the history of some of this project, the impacts to the property for both an eight use shared, eight-foot wide shared use path and a five-foot sidewalk, and then a little comparison on the east versus the west side of 12th Avenue, and then some potential design obstacles for the sidewalk to be on the west side of the 12th Avenue, of 12th Avenue. So, are you going to pop that up there?
Yeah.
So maybe a little history. Heather Thomas put this together with Jeff Soggy's help. In 2009, discussion began on a sidewalk and/or path on the, on Governor, or Governor Road, sorry, should be 12th Avenue, East Olive Street, and 17th Avenue. From the documentation that we put together, at that time, it was intended to be a six-foot wide path. And I believe if the documentation indicates, that was at the request of the Marshall County Fair Board, to make sure that the trail could be maintained along the county fair property. In September, or yeah, in September of 2010, plans were prepared with a, again, a six-foot side, a six-foot path on the east side of 12th Avenue, from Anson to Olive Street, on the north side of Olive Street, from 12th Avenue to 17th Avenue, and on the west side of 17th Avenue, north of East Olive Street. Those plans were performed, or prepared and signed under my predecessor Lynn Couch, with Bruce Campbell doing the primary design. CGA took a look at these plans that I was able to pull from our files and take a look. And Mr. Campbell's now an employee of CGA. His recollection was that the design that was approved by our former city engineer was not going to be able to be constructed as laid out on plans, but it was their plan to field adjust the sidewalk and to make it work, to move around utility obstacles, to make sure that grades and, and grading would work. The survey data that CGA worked through earlier this year confirmed that many of the drive crossings on the east side were not in ADA compliance, which means they had a cross-slope in excess of the tolerance, and that the design as laid out in 2010 would not have, would not have worked. In April of 2011, the city decided to reduce the width from a six-foot to a four-foot sidewalk. They did, the council at that time did take into a, into evaluation the sidewalk on the east side versus the west side. Preliminary analysis of the cost difference showed the impact trees, sheds, and utilities were presented to the council, and the council agreed at their May 2nd, 2011 meeting that the east side would be best utilized for the sidewalk. In 2019, CGA took a look again and asked what the reason was for the sidewalk being increased from the four foots, or six-foot range to a eight-foot, 10-foot range. The response was that property owners, particularly the fairground, were in, in desire of having a sidewalk or walking path that could be plowed with a pickup truck for snow removal. CGA did meet with the, my staff on March 28th to go over some of the varying widths and found that there were pinch points, areas where it would be difficult to get eight-foot path, or even maybe a five-foot path, through some of the obstacles, including property lines, utility conflicts. They found one such pinch point near the 12th Avenue Storage, trying to weave in between communication pedestals, fences, and power poles. And then along Olive, they found a pinch point that would have been weaving in between communication pedestals and power points, uh, power poles. In June, CGA met with city staff and reviewed preliminary plans and needed property acquisition. The only change that my staff directed was to redesign Olive from a six-foot wide path to a five-foot wide path. There wasn't a whole lot of benefit in having that extra foot of width along Olive Street. Jessica Field, scroll on to the next page. During the last meeting, city, city council had questions, and there was some discussion on the possibility of reducing the width of the shared use path from eight feet to a five-foot sidewalk, with the intent to eliminate the need for some easements. CGA did go back and evaluate all of the 25 parcels that we would need easements, and found that the reduction in width from an eight-foot path to a five-foot path only needed, only eliminated the need for a permanent easement on two of the 25. It is possible that the need for permanent easement could be eliminated if we switch the sidewalk, or if we moved the sidewalk closer to the traveled way or closer to the Moving on to page four, a quick analysis by CGA noted that the number of impacted parcels on the west side of 12th Avenue would be 23, and that the number of impacted parcels on the east side would be 11. And then they further reviewed that impacted parcels with driveways would require seventeen parcels on the west side of the road with eight parcels on the east side of the road. One of the 13 drives on the west side is a residential property with one, only one access. And on the east side, there are three, three properties with only one access in and out, 12th Avenue Storage, the Larson Construct Yard, or Searsy Storage Building. To summarize, page five, Heather took a look, and there are approximately 18 power poles on the west side that would be an obstacle to moving the sidewalk to that west side. Many are located roughly five feet from the property line, which would be right in the same line of where the city standard cross-section would place the sidewalk. Until a survey is completed, it is unknown whether the five-foot sidewalk could be placed at the property line without having to relocate the power poles. If the city did not choose to relocate the power poles, it's possible that additional permanent easements would be needed to place the sidewalk behind the power poles, or sidewalk would need to be relocated on the roadside of the power poles closer to the traveled The slope of the many pedestrian, or pedestrian, many of the residential drives on the west side of the road would require significant front yard grading and driveway replacement. If, look, following along in your packet, if you move on to page six, you'll see a great example of this, one at 916 12th Avenue, where you can see that in order to provide protection from stormwater running off of 12th Avenue, the grade would need to be brought up. And then chasing that grade at a allowable slope to meet the Americans with Disabilities Act would take driveway work and front yard work well back into the front yards of many of those residential properties. CGA concluded that multiple trees, shrubs, and hedges are located within the road right-ofway on the west side of 12th Avenue. Significant impacts at 909, 916, 917, 919, 1201, and 1213 would occur. Lesser impacts from trimming are anticipated at the other properties. Private properties such as decorative lighting and fencing appear to be located within the right-ofway and would likely need to be removed or relocated for the project. There's also a garage that comes very close to the property line, but until a survey is completed, it's not known whether it's located within the right-ofway. 1105 12th Avenue has a multi-vehicle gravel parking pad within the right-ofway. City would need to decide whether to allow that to remain, or whether to, to eliminate the parking within the right-ofway at 1105. The agricultural properties, approximately 1,000 feet, have a rather large ditch. This would require sidewalk to be placed on private property, or significant earthwork and storm sewer would need to be undertaken to install the sidewalk within the right-ofway. The southern end is, is much rider, is much wider. And appears permanent easement would be needed at 1601, 1607, 1609, 1611, 12th Avenue, to accommodate a sidewalk on that side of the street. That's a brief summary of, of where we stand today on the 12th Avenue Shared Use Path or Sidewalk. I'd be happy to entertain any questions, or we do have a representative from Clapsettle &amp; Garber that can assist me with that.
Thank you. Questions?
Comment here would be that as of a decade or 10 years ago, the necessity for improved safety, accessibility, and connectivity was announced then and seemed to be a priority, as I think it is now. Safety on that area, timeliness of the traffic pattern there is critical, as well as increased access, I believe, by joggers, hikers, bicycle riders, people going and coming to work on other than motorized vehicles. I don't know the answer for sure. I just don't. I know it's a tough decision. I know it could be expensive, but if you're looking long-term, it improves that whole quadrant with all of those things, safety, connectivity, and accessibility.
Other comments or questions?
These properties that you have down here for easements that say no, is that the ones that were prior, way back, paid for their easements?
Not all of them. Counselor Hoop, I believe in 2009 or 2010, we acquired four, is what my file, what the engineering files indicate. So there are, looks to me like there's something on the order of 10 or 11 on this. So either they were acquired in 2011, those four, or there just is no need for a permanent easement on those properties.
The easements that were obtained, are they still in effect? Is there a time limit on those?
I must admit, I would hope that if it was a permanent easement, that if there was no expiration date, I can go look, go back and look. If they were temporary easements, usually those come with an expiration date. I don't know the answer right offhand.
Oh, I just wanted to let you know, I appreciate this from Heather, and you, and others who put this together. I just want to take it and walk around. So, I can't say, I think it will help to have all of these details and be able to watch for these things as I look around the area. But I think it, it will just take me some more time digesting this, I think, before I could say yea or nay. But I would, so if I could have, if, my wish would be for a couple of weeks, if we could bring it up again on the 26th, that'd be my choice. If it were up to me. It's not just up to me.
I would add that we are currently under contract for the design of an eight-foot shared use path. So if the desire was to continue down that path, I don't believe that any council action would be necessary. I'm sure the city attorney could, could help me with that. But unless we're looking to make a change, I'm not sure any council action would be necessary at this time.
And on which side?
That would be on the east, east side, yes. Is the current design.
Justin, can you refresh my memory? The funds for this come from?
So in our 2018 borrowing, I think we borrowed roughly $900,000 to construct this. Jessica, correct me if I'm wrong, those could be repaid using TIF funds?
We weren't looking at this as a TIF project. We pursued a general obligation bond for, for the project. And I think it was a million, but that number went down. I think we have $900,000 for actual construction, based on the engineering contract with CGA.
And the costs, have they been figured for the eight-foot versus the five-foot?
I don't know about a cost for the five-foot, just making sure that we were using the best of our money. of our money. We have a cost estimate currently for the eight-foot, and I believe it's a little over a million dollars right now, so we may look to need, may need to do a little trimming to get it back around the 900,000. Of course, I would always plug in that a engineer is usually being conservative and has a little bit of contingency in that, in that cost.
Excuse me. And if I heard you correctly, the eight-foot was as much a benefit for the fairgrounds who wanted to be able to plow it with a truck?
To the best?
Were there other benefits that you can point out for the eight-foot versus a five-foot?
Sure. To the best of my knowledge, this all started in 2009, prior to my employment here, but yes, a lot of the discussion was centered around if that path was on the east side of 12th Avenue, the ability to remove snow using a pickup truck or a motorized vehicle rather than having to shovel it by hand.
One clarification to make, though, is if we're talking about an eight-foot wide shared-use path, that is the city's responsibility. It does not meet the definition of a sidewalk per ordinance, and that would ultimately be our Parks and Recreation Department that would be removing that snow. Anything that is a five-foot wide sidewalk, as defined by our ordinances, is the adjacent property owner's responsibility for maintenance and, maintenance of snow and ice, and then ultimately, long-term care and replacement.
Other comment?
Well, I've, I said a mouthful last time around, and I think everybody knows where I stand on it, but I'm not opposed to a sidewalk on Olive Street and up 12th and up 17th, so that the people from the halfway house have a sidewalk to walk on rather than walking on the street. I have, I have no opposition to that. I, I don't know why the city wants to own another piece of sidewalk that we have to take care of, that we have to send our crews out to clean when everybody else in town doesn't get that same option. If you're gonna do that, why don't you put a fi, an eight-footer in front of my house and you can plow my sidewalk too? I, I, I know that it's part of, they're looking at the future for maybe hooking up to a bike trail or something like that in the future. I understand that. But I look back at Marshalltown, and I came here in 81, and today we have just 1,000 more people in Marshalltown than we did in 1981 when I came here. And if we're looking at a 50-year expansion, I don't see where that's, where that's a good use of our funds. I think we could, we could go around some schools and ta, take this down to five-foot, go around some of the schools and, and add some sidewalks there so to help the kids get to school safer, and I'd rather spend it there than here. I'm done. And the reason it stopped last time wasn't because of the-
You're not done yet.
I just wanted to add this one item so everybody understands. The last time we did this, the reason it didn't work was because they were going to use TIF funds to fund it. And the definition of TIF funds would not work in this case. I'm done.
Just, just to, to make one clarification, is that this, whatever year two is in our sidewalk priority plan, because we're really, I mean, we're off a whole year now, year two is focusing on some sidewalk improvements around, I think it's two elementary schools. And so those are out there, you know, those are part of the plan. I think year three was all around one elementary school. And so those, those are definitely out there, we're not, and we're on our radar, but this one rose to the top because of the documented history of pedestrian and vehicle accidents. No others had that in that area.
Other comments or questions? Up here or down there?
But I think just to kind of clarify of where we wanted this to go tonight is that there had been some, at the last council meeting, there was mention of disagreement with the scope of work. And so I think what we need to get clarified very quickly, because it impacts our contract with CGA, is what are we constructing? Because they're currently under contract for an eight-foot path for the, the 12th Avenue portion, five-foot for the rest. And so if that needs to change, or if you want to change that, we need direction from you to change that.
Every weekend, we, we enjoy the eight-foot path for the Iowa River path and the Grimes Farm path, both. They're well, well-maintained. They have a lot of use. They're good for us that like to walk, bike, run, take strollers or whatever. So I, I have no bone to pick in the 12th Avenue area. I just know that's a good place to let kids get to the soccer field. So I, I hope the rest of the council thinks that's something that would be beneficial to protect.
Mr. Mayor, there's one problem with the project. It doesn't go to the soccer fields, yet they end before the soccer fields. I'd rather spend five, more money on a five-foot sidewalk to take it across 17th Avenue and go to the soccer fields and doing the eight-foot in front of Fisher Controls. They don't need an eight-foot sidewalk down there, not now.
No? Other comments?
I guess I, I can't argue with Leon with regards to eight-foot versus five-foot. It's a very valid point, and I guess I would also add to that, where's the, where's the next closest eight-foot sidewalk or path, I should say, next to that area? So being responsible with regards to the funds available, I would agree, as well as maintenance, care, and upkeep.
Other input? Roll call.
There hasn't been a motion or anything, but that was just going to be my suggestion of if you, if you want to change the scope to five-foot completely, that there probably should be a motion and a second and a vote in order to provide that direction to us as staff so that we can work with CGA on amending our contract.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna do a motion and go that direction, then I would say for myself that the eight-foot sidewalk would take the, the maintenance and the upkeep out of the business owner's requirement. Would, and it would be easier to get the easements and build the path.
I would, I would move that we make it a five-foot path and we, and we extend it on the Olive side, across 17th Avenue, just far enough so the kids can get into the soccer fields. If we're worried about, if we're worried about a place so the kids would be safe getting there, let's, what's that, another 100 feet?
Actually, it just takes a crossing across Olive, which probably might actually be a little more expensive off the top of my head, but point taken.
But anyway, I, I would like to see that done and then just go to a five-foot all the way.
I'd like to clarify what Al said. Are you visualizing that if the snow removal is left to the, to the owners, which are mainly businesses, as you outlined on, on that, that it won't get done? Because many of them are not necessarily storefront businesses.
I'm just saying, if you put that burden on them, then, then they won't get, well, it could maybe not get done. An eight-foot pass will get done.
No, it would get done, but it would be put on the city.
Correct.
To do it. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that in my mind. Thank you.
My question would be, what possible impact, obstruction, barriers would there be on the five-foot wide section?
I think we outlined that in the memo. Realistically, we still need a permanent easement from just about the same amount that we would, same amount of property owners that we would for an eight-foot path, and I believe exactly the same amount of temporary easements. We still would need to navigate the utility issues, but none of these are overcomeable obstacles, just the, just the difference in the, in the width of a shared-use path versus a sidewalk.
Does your, the analysis on here, I would take it that, that the data that you've provided us with here shows that the east side is the far better choice than the west side of 12th Street?
I'm not sure if I would use the, the term-
Yes, or?
Far better, Council, Councilwoman Cahill, but yes, from the impact, from the impact to the property owners, from the impact to utilities, from the need for grading-
Driveways.
In the agricultural area, as long as, including storm sewer work to be done with that grading, yes, the lesser impact would be to construct a sidewalk or path on the eastern, eastern side of 12th Avenue.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
So the motion is to, to, Leon moved to construct a five-foot path and extend it easterly to Olive, to the soccer fields.
Correct. There needs to be a second.
I thought, I thought we had one, but if not, is there a second?
So move? Or second?
Second? Any more comments or questions?
Could you read that again, Sherri? Just to make sure, because I know there's, there's going to be a lot more discussion other than, on the impact to the, the people that live there and the businesses and stuff, but I just want to know what we're voting on. But it's to change it from eight-foot to five-foot, correct? Okay.
For all the, for all the paths.
For all the paths, okay.
And to extend it on Olive Street south to the soccer fields.
Okay. Thank you.
Other discussion? Let's vote.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
Weren?
No.
Cahill?
Yes.
Motion carried, 4-3.
Thank you.
Then this means that this will go back to, we'll go back to CGA, change the design, and then, yeah, we'll, we'll be talking to you further about the easement situation as we move forward.
Thank you. Madam Court, next item, please.
For discussion, an addition of a planner position to the Housing and Community Development Department.
Good evening, Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing, Community Development Director. Tonight I wanted to bring forward a possibility of looking at the addition of bringing back a planning position into our department. You may recall about four and a half years ago or so, our planner left the city and we did not refill that position due to some budgetary issues and thought we could try to make, make do with some things, and we have, but it has been a struggle to do that within the department. Many of the planning activities kind of fell back onto my soldiers and to our building official, our administrative, and then when code enforcement came on back in November of 17 to that issue. So one of the things, as we are proposing hiring with our LED grant, we have funding for a part-time position for somebody to help with administration of our LED grant duties. And so the thought came that this might be an opportunity for us to do some combination of funding to create a position that not only works with the planning side of things, but also with some of our grant administration, specifically with the LED grant, as we have that as a current one through September of 2022. With a lot of the recent plans that we have completed within the community, the Highway 14 corridor, the downtown plan, and of course, all the tornado recovery activity, our department has been quite stressed with trying to get all those things done and keep on top of the day-to-day that we're doing as well. So one of the things that we wanted, I wanted to bring forward for discussion was the council's willingness to consider that option. We would look for this funding year to the portion that would not be LED grant-funded, could possibly come from the local option sales tax, council-designated source, and then the employee benefit levy for the benefit portion of that, and then to go into general budgeting, again, with that split ratio until the LED grant is no longer available or if other grant funds become available, we may see some transitions in time there. But I think that we have a lot of things coming up to implement the plans that we've accepted, which are really exciting. Many of them involve code updates, which we've talked about for the downtown and the Highway 14 corridor, additional enhancements and enforcements and reviews and things of that nature. So I wanted to bring it forward as a possibility, see whether or not this was something worth pursuing of interest to the council. We do have the positions posted for the LED inspection. A LED inspector is a full-time and a part-time currently. We're continuing to take applications for those positions as they stand. We would propose that this would be a civil service position, even though there is partial grant funding to it, that would give us that flexibility in going through, which the planner would normally be a civil service function, so.
entertain any questions or?
Michelle, did I understand you to say the LED position, there is one full-time and one half-time position?
Correct. In our budget for that grant, that's what we had initially budgeted.
And I know, I'm not, I'm just saying, what, what would be the impact of hiring a half-time planner? That would go, that would, would partner with the half-time LED? Would it be easier to find, or I mean, would that be something that would?
I think that, that, I think a lot of planning positions, grant work is not uncommon. You know, when we think of a lot of council government-type positions, entry-level planning positions, city departments, grant work is not uncommon partnership there. What specific duties we outline for that person related to the LED grant would probably depend on, on the staffing that we end up having. But I, I think that there's, there is a connection there between planning and grant work. Those kind of things do go hand in hand. So certainly, if we have the ability to do full-time over part-time, it's going to be more of a draw for an individual than just a part-time position. I don't think we would have success in trying to hire just a part-time planner. I think that the, you know, education and experience and that type of thing, that wouldn't be something that we would find somebody having interest. But a full-time position that includes grant work and planning work, I, I would be hopeful that we would be able to identify somebody that would be interested.
Thank you.
Can you, can you tell us what kind of dollars we're talking?
In the memo, I included what it would be for the annual amount, and this is currently based on our, our pay scales. Annually, it would be 80,250, that's wages and benefits together. And then the table in the memo gives you the breakdown for the rest of the fiscal year if we were to start something September 1st, which is obviously probably a bit ambitious. So we would have to go through that civil service process, so it might be obviously later than that, but I took September 1st as the soonest kind of round number to start with.
I think it's a good idea, and I move that we move forward with this.
Any second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Do we basically pay them and then you reimburse the city out of the federal funds?
Yeah, the way we run any, you know, for example, my time is split between five different things. So on our time sheets, it's billed out to each account respectively, and so we get, yeah, reimbursed through the federal grant on a monthly basis.
Okay. Great. You need a second? You got a second?
We have a second. All right. Stephen Trosky was our last city planner.
Correct.
He's still helping us in different ways?
Absolutely.
Discussion or questions? Public comment? Let's vote.
Before we do- Before we do, I'm sorry, I'm always slow in getting my comments out. I guess the only thing that I don't know, I agree, you guys have done a tremendous amount of work and that you, what you've done, including the tornado and all, I can't imagine how you're getting it done now. The only thing I don't know is how this really affects our budget overall. Whether by doing this, are we giving up something else? I just don't have that comparison here to know. Are we, again, I see it as a good thing to have, because I've seen the work that your department does, but I don't know at what expense. And I wasn't here four years ago when that was eliminated to understand the reasoning behind that at that time. What were we saving at that time? So I might say before we vote, is there a way to look at it in the overall budget of whether, of what that looks like, or what this affects?
Yeah, so just to kind of clarify for you, we're asking that this be funded in the remainder of this fiscal year with local option sales tax, which that would essentially be if we were saying, you know, if you recall where we sort of started this fiscal year was that there was a planned transfer, though minor, of local option sales tax into the general fund, because no other funding was available to fill a small gap. And so this would then increase that gap. Ultimately, as we go throughout the fiscal year, what we tend to find is that wages and other things never quite come in as high as they typically, or as they are budgeted for. I would say that's not, you know, a standard rule or anything. But just as you have people who leave positions, they don't work their total budgeted time. It takes time to get somebody hired, so you do have gaps there. Where we're saying that this would be, looking at it in the total budget, would be in the next fiscal year's budget, which would be starting, we'd be starting that process in December and ultimately bringing forward a proposal to you in January. We do know that valuations, assessed valuations did not drop the way that we thought they would. There's actually an increase, so that's quite the surprise. What we don't know at this point, and we won't know until probably a December timeframe, is what is that residential property rollback? As that's going to, residential property is our largest property class. That's gonna determine how much of that value is actually taxable. So that's when we know kind of what the bigger picture starts to look like for the next fiscal year. I would say it would probably not be uncommon that we're talking, I mean, for the last few years, we've been using local option sales tax to fill a gap, only if it actually materializes at the end of the fiscal year, which Diana watches. And so I would say that this is really putting it to, let's put this in the budget so we know what we're talking about when we're building our budget versus coming back in January and saying, can we try and add this in for next fiscal year and go the remainder of this fiscal year without a position?
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Shall we vote?
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Thank you. Carrie. I think we're at the point where item J on the agenda, public comment. Does anyone wish to publicly comment? And if so, I have to read a long disclosure. Members of the public may comment on any item not on the agenda during this time. State your name, address. Limit your comments to three minutes unless I authorize longer. Direct your comments to the mayor and council as a whole. The mayor and councilors may engage in discussion on or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no action may be taken at any such item. Hi, Carrie.
You good?
I'm good, well, good enough.
Okay. Carrie Thompson, 101 Byron Street. I'm here tonight to ask for your help. I need each of you to reach out to Alliant Energy. It's been a year since the tornado, and as far as public safety, there's still a lot of street lights out, and there's a lot of dark streets. Security cameras don't work as well when there's no light. Things happen in the dark, as we know. A couple of my cohorts couldn't be here tonight that have more skin in the game, so to say, about what lack of lighting has done to their residences and their businesses. But for example, I put a work request in for a street light that was out by my brother's house on June 20th to Alliant. I got the automated reply that it would be fixed in five days. I waited till July 20th and asked him how long one of their days was, and put another request in for the same street light. And then before this meeting, I put a third request in, and again, the five-day reply came. The light is still not fixed. It's a dark intersection, obviously, at night. I then called Alliant and spoke to someone in Madison, Wisconsin. They did have someone reach out to me from the local office and said they finally put a work request in to that light. But there are a lot more lights that need fixed, and I don't have the pull to get Alliant to move on this stuff. So here tonight, I am doing something a little odd. Instead of berating you all, I am asking for your help. I would appreciate any help, any context you have at Alliant. And last night, just walking in this neighborhood, within a block of this building, there are six street lights that are out. So I can't even imagine the total number of street lights that are still down and out from a year ago. So Joel, and all of you, and Joel in your free time, please help me. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. I don't have any pull, whether you spell it P-O-L-L or P-O-L-E. Actually, on our street, they were able to get the light up that we paid for with three neighbors. But there still are a lot of lights out, and we know that, and Alliant does, too. I'm meeting with them tomorrow, so I'll bring it up. Any other public comment?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I have one.
Go for it.
I think that as the city, we need to be the big brother, or we need to be the mom and dad that sets the example for our citizens. We can't have pride in our downtown when there's a light pole with a beautiful basket hanging over. And right behind it is a wooden pole in our parking lot that's got a three-foot-high weed as a backdrop for the seat, for that beautiful basket of flowers. I kind of relate us to the parents and the kids. The kids see that the parents don't care, so the kids pick that up as it's okay that way. Well, I think it's time for Dad and Mom here to clean up our act so that everybody downtown will want to clean up their act, too. And if we have to help them for a little while to get the idea, I think we need to do that. That's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Lemur. I would suggest Jessica's probably the right recipient to get that address. And in my world, I've had very good response to sending things like that to her. So, thank you. Other comments?
Just want to say thank you to the 13th Street Board. We were out on Saturday, for those who haven't driven by Salvation Army, got a little bit of a facelift temporarily and got painted. So 13th Street Board, 13th Street District did a nice job taking some time out of their weekend.
Thanks, Gabe. I meant to start the meeting with a shout-out to another couple. And so I'm late, but let me do that now. Mark Antona Nord.
You did it.
I did.
Oh, but on that note, thank you for reminding me, Your Honor, because I think they're leading another of those contests. Aren't they having another dancing or talent? Got Talent, that's what they call it. I saw a poster up, so I was really happy to see that. I think it's a United Way fundraiser coming up this fall, so watch for more.
And I should, in thanking them for their service, she was the co-chair of the United Way Drive two years ago. Anybody else have any contact, information, or want to approach the mic? If not, I think we'll declare the meeting closed now.
Okay. We have to read this.
Yeah, we have to.
So we need a motion and a second first to go into closed session.
There you go. Thanks. So moved?
Second.
And that's pursuant to Section 21.5, Subsection 1, Paragraph C of the Code of Iowa.
Very good. Thank you. Roll call.
To discuss strategy with the council on matters where litigation is imminent versus closure will be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the city in that litigation. The City of Marshalltown has an attorney-client relationship with their attorney, Roger Shella, appointed as city attorney on May 5, 2014 by council resolution, and with Lynch-Dallas PC by council resolution approved May 8, 2017. Lemur?
Here.
Motion to--
Yes or no, please?
Yes.
Close session. Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Thank you. Weren?